This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting, Tuesday, May 6, 2025. The meeting is available by GoToMeetings as well. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve.
Second.
Handmade a motion. Jim, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The first. Motion passes. Approve the minutes of the April 29 meeting. There's few corrections. I think we got those corrected.
Make a motion to approve the April 29 meeting?
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
I'm calling Mark.
Go ahead.
Sam.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes. The county attorney is very busy. He will not be here right now. Sheriff update.
Oh, I don't have any words for it.
Anything for the sheriff? Department head.
Okay, super quick. I went to the Howard County tech team on Thursday and Friday. The biggest talk was the solutions contract, so we'll talk about that a little bit later. I have phones ordered now for public help. I did a total of 15 to get them started. The, I, I've worked with Laura on how we want the messages to go. So the first thing to do is testing, then we switch the official phone number over, and then they're good to go. Obviously, there's some training in the middle. Iowa IT says they will come and do in-person training. I think we talked about that a little bit. So yeah, that's the process of the actual phone system, and then the solutions contract and every normal IT thing that's going on in the county and computers and all of that. So do you guys have any questions? We'll talk about solutions, obviously, in the agenda meeting.
Okay.
Very good. Good?
Thank you. Any other department head? Johnny, engineer.
Morning.
Good morning.
Not a lot this morning, but the, the bridge deck on Echo got poured last Friday. I don't know if they've started releasing forms yet on the bridge deck, but I know they're forming up for the railing. They're supposed to be forming for the railing. And as soon as they get strength in the deck, they'll probably start pouring the railing, which, I don't know. I had a good weekend, so I don't know if, I saw some ready-made trucks headed this way, so I don't know if they're gonna do a bore or not, but it's moving along quite, quite quickly, so that's a nice thing that's going on with that. Trying to schedule pre-con for the, the bridge south of McIntyre. And then trying to schedule pre-con for the paving around town. So those things are in process. Gonna be sending out paint maps or paint quotes this week for our roadway striping. And then I've got the rock maps completed. I think we'll probably try to send them out this week if I've got the time to get them out, so. That stuff's progressing. A couple of things. I think I mentioned this a while ago. We are sharing a dura-patcher with Worth County. It's our, I don't know if you want to call it a pothole patcher. They purchased the machine years ago, and then as a, as a sharing technique, we were providing a dump truck to pull it with. So we were sharing for a while in that regard financially. And then over the years, we developed our own, we got our trucks working, so they have their own truck. We have our own truck, and they technically still own the machine. Worth County has an opportunity to purchase another one of those machines from Northwood. So they got a really good price from Northwood to buy a machine. And then I thought maybe we should just buy the machine from Northwood from Worth County. So we aren't trying to share and trying to schedule it, and there's only so many windows of opportunity. It seems like in the summer time, we're always running behind, so. I called the, the dealer on what ours is, what, what Worth County's is probably worth. And he gave me a range, so I think in $11,000 for that machine, we can purchase from Worth County, and then Worth County can purchase theirs from, from the city of Northwood. If that's okay, I know I've got the budget money for it. And on top of that, I got a lead yesterday on some used motor graders out of Duluth. I think they're 2020 models with 1,000 to 1,500 hours on them. They're 140 all-wheel drives. And they're $288,000, I think, and that's, that's about two-thirds the price of a new one, or maybe even, you know, a little bit. It's a really good price. Our budget and equipment shows we could purchase one if we, if you guys allowed to. If we can get our hands on one, we could take one of our 8,000-hour machines, put it in as a backup, trade in a Volvo, which would make it a little cheaper, and then get a 1,000-hour, 1,500-hour machine as one of our full-time machines. And our dump trucks chassis aren't coming in until July, so that's the next fiscal year, which I budgeted for those two complete trucks in that year. So we've got a little, we've got the opportunity and the money that maybe we could purchase one of those if you guys are okay with juggling around. The, the money is in the budget. We could get, there's enough money in the budget to do it in that line item, to do the motor grader and the, and the dura-patcher, so we've got all of our own equipment, and we could get a, an upgraded or a newer machine. But it's all with drive, too, which is really nice.
Do they wing it up?
They have falls equipment. I'm not sure about the front plow, but they do have snow equipment. There's a falls. They said they had, they told me it had the falls, uh, snow equipment, so. Even if it doesn't have a front wing, it's still a good price for a, for a $1,000 machine. You know, we put that many hours on in a year. They've had them for four or five years, so.
So just wing it?
Well, I don't know that we can swing it to get two of them unless we wanna. I'd really like to find out how the year ends in, in the budget. They had, they had 20 machines to get rid of, and 17 are already spoken for. So it's, I wished I would get a little bit more lead time than that, than when 17 are gone, and then they say, hey, there's a couple left, but. Any thoughts on trying to do that? I don't know that I can get them, but I told the salesman that I was interested in it, so.
Why don't you go for it?
What was the price on your?
I don't know the exact price for sure. Again, like 288,000 range. And I think the last time we bought, when we bought an all-wheel-drive motor grader in Worth County, it was a John Deere, but it was way over 400. I think it was over 450,000 for a new machine, so.
Why did they, did they all come out of Minnesota or?
They, it's like, the last time we bought, we had a, I think some of these larger cities, communities will purchase machines for winter time only, and they'll plow their streets with them, and then, you know, they don't put very many hours on them, and then I think they probably roll through their equipment every five years or something, and they'll, they'll turn them in for trade, and then they'll buy new equipment. So it's just, it seems like, I don't know why we're getting, why they're out of Minnesota, but yeah, I think the last ones were out of Minnesota, too, that we had the opportunity. I think we bought two, two used ones. I think they were 2015 all-wheel drives with same amount of hours on them, so.
So if you were able to get two, you're gonna keep two for that?
We're, I think I can only swing one with the budget that we have. So we'll probably trade in a Volvo on that, one of the, one of the Volvo all-wheel drives. We'll take one of our current cats that's gonna have 8,000 hours on it, put that into our, our winter backup lead, and then we'll use this other one as a full-time machine since it's got less hours on it. We'll get rid of one. We'll get one, rotate some machines.
Were you about out of Volvos then?
No. Well, we're getting closer. We're thinning down the herd. We're slowly, we're slowly knocking them off.
You can swing it. I'd be fine. Worth County doesn't do that?
I can't. The budget's a little different over there. I'm gonna try. Problem is, I had the information after I had my board meeting, so I, so I'll tell the salesman that I'm still interested. We'll see. I can swing it over there, too, because it would be great.
So if you look out ahead for like next year, what kinds of machinery expenses are you expecting something like this then again for next year, or?
I'm not, but I never expect that they're gonna. Yeah, so we do right now have budgeted, I think we have 800,000 budgeted, and that's supposed to cover the two new dump trucks. And then whatever miscellaneous equipment we might need to find, that's, that probably leaves, I can't remember what the exact price of the trucks were now, but it might leave us less than $200,000 in that budget to, if we're looking for a, a drop-deck trailer or something, something we can purchase, when we find that the aligns. All right, well, we can get that going, though. Are Josh, Summer, things around?
Intern loan will be paid back next week during claims, too. So y'all done.
I'll be attention. I know the money's gonna come back, so I just look at the.
Did you get consensus from us?
Yes.
Well, see, I mean, you have.
There's money in the budget to purchase it, but.
I appreciate you letting us.
Well, it's a big purchase. It's not like all of a sudden a surprise, so. Okay, well, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Public hearing is at 9:00 a.m., so we will. Down to Jenny. Jenny, discussion, possible action on CLP application for OSH Economic Betterment.
Hello. All right, so I have an application for OSH Economic Betterment, and so they're requesting $20,000 for their total project cost is over $1 million. And that's going to be for new construction of municipal property. They had enough points. You guys got, you guys should receive all the separation on the application. They had enough points to be eligible for the fund, so they scored 90 out of 100 points. Didn't have all of the, didn't use all of Mitchell County contract for some purchases, so I deducted a few points there. And then the building is going to be, or the funds are gonna be used for. Arnic is in need of some storage, warehousing and stuff, and so the building is going to be for that.
This is a business that's grown and, and brought some additional folks into the county, which is, which is good.
It'll be a freestanding building, so then if down the road, you know, Arnic decides they don't need the stores, then it can be used for maybe another business will have to use for it.
And has this been approved? It's not checked off that it's been approved by you, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. It was approved at our last meeting Monday.
Last week?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Handmade a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Hand made. Any further discussion?
See, they've already started the project?
Um, I don't believe so. It's supposed to start, well, okay, yeah, it was supposed to start at the end of April, so.
There's dirt, dirt work that's going on.
So I haven't.
So they've already started before they came and asked for that?
It doesn't matter. Not with this program. It's identified in the guidelines that the project can be started.
I just said start by April 45th or something. Sorry. That's all that.
All right. We're calling Jim.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion, possible action on CLP application for the bar on Broad.
Yep, so another application on the amount of $20,000 is being requested on the total project cost is estimated at over $60,000. And so this, so currently this building is operating as a 24/7 fitness center, and then after renovations to the upper level, it'll be an office and then also an apartment. They've scored enough points to be eligible for the funds. They scored 95 out of 100. And again, it was approved at our last meeting. Sorry, I missed that there.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the CLP application for the bar on Broad.
Handmade a motion. Is there a second? Mark, second. Any further discussion?
We're calling Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Approved treasurers report for April.
One second.
Morning.
All right. Smaller numbers, but. Motor vehicles paid to General Basic in April was $199, $2.28. Of that, motor vehicle, vehicle fees to General Basic, which is the county, is $12,623.62. Those numbers came from $869 worth of postage, 1,624 driver's license monies. That was 232 issued in the county last month. A lot of people, just for clarification, for the real ID, tomorrow is the, the deadline that you can fly without it. It's not the deadline to get it. We will continue to issue them from here forward. It's just, a lot of people are getting nervous because they think that we're gonna stop issuing real IDs, which is illogical, because all the new learner permits and people coming this day, we issue real IDs, so the deadline of May 7th is tomorrow. If you don't have the gold star, you can't fly domestically. Or you can, but you have to take all the paper that you give to us that Iowa certifies we have and show it to TSA and hope that they like it, and then you can fly. If you don't have a gold star or something.
There's been discussion. I've heard people say, what do I need to bring you over to get, what do, what do I need to bring to you in order to get?
The best situation is if they have a valid current passport. Then they just bring that in, because that represents their name, period. If you do not have a passport, you have to bring in your certified birth certificate. Has to have the RACE seal from the county or state. If it's a hospital, because in the old days, hospitals would give keepsakes and put a little foil star and seal it. If it says Mercy or Mitchell County Regional, Mitchell County Hospital and has footprints, can't take that. That's not certified. That's just a keepsake. So everyone has to bring their birth certificate. If you have changed your name, AKA gotten married, but some newer generation, some of the guys change their names on their marriage licenses. So if you have changed your name and it doesn't match your birth certificate, you have to bring that name change document. Usually it's a marriage license or a court order. If you can't find those, and that has been an old name change, if you bring a social security card that has that correctly on it, we can search in the social security system and verify it. And then your social security card, if you don't have that, we could do an affidavit that you sign, and then two pieces of mail that are delivered to an address, not a P.O. box. Federal government says you can't live in a post office.
So passport is just yet.
Passport is the golden ticket as far as certified.
But then is there a number of all those items you mentioned, or all, you have to have all those?
Yep, that's all.
All of them, okay.
So if you're coming in from scratch, it's four items for someone that has not changed their name from birth or has a passport. If that's four items, the mail, social security card, birth certificate, and pieces of mail. If they have changed their name, it's fine. It's available online as well. You can look it up. It's on our website, but they can call too. They'll walk them through it. They don't have a marriage license or birth certificate, and they're born or married in Mitchell County. It can swing to the recorder's office, and for $15 they can make.
Back to number?
Yep, that's my usual, I have like, I have an actual spiel saved in my phone. People message me on Facebook or text me, and I just copy and paste all those details. And some people, if your, if your, your passport is not gonna expire for a while, you can wait. You don't have to have it, because you can fly with your passport instead of the gold star until you got it, so. But some people don't like to take their passport with them, whether they're just flying to California or something, because you normally wouldn't need it, but if you don't have the gold star, you can use your passport in place of the gold star. For convenience, we had $70, because we issued seven people that did not reside in the county. Oregon donations was $49.10. Now we got the odd amount. New registration fee to state, fees paid to the state was $170,249.79. Of that, we retained $2,769.10. So the total motor vehicle collections for the whole month was $387,256.89. And of that, the county retained $17,955.72. Now, it's been as last month, it's still better than years previous. Property taxes collected was $865,965.11. And then the penalty's were $8,981. Special assessments collected was $4,632.65. Tax sales certificates redeemed, we had two for $4,374. Prepaid taxes where, we had a standard notification, I talked about that last time. The figuring was for someone mailed it to us in May, so if they paid it in April via mail, they were, they had double interest on there. So we don't charge them what they sent us. We split that towards future, so there's some prepays that are going towards futures. And we did have one farm family that had a sale of property that was larger amount, so. I said before, I don't refund those amounts. We just put them towards futures. And then interest on investments was $66,817.78. Mislaid receipts process was $1,034,237.73. That was 91 mislaid receipts. That number, if you norm, look, were normally in the 40s. Last month, I think it was 41. This month, I did this tier two end-of-business property tax credit, and the new process of doing that is to make a mislaid receipt. So that skewed our number a little bit, because that was. And then Chris getting caught up on all this 911s. The numbers will, if you look at that number, the mislaid receipts process was a lot higher than normal. Yeah, it's 42 last month. That's why. Any questions?
For a total of?
For a total of $2,396,126.69.
Is there a motion to approve treasury report for April?
Move, move, move. Go ahead, Tom.
Tom made a motion?
I will second it.
And Jim, second. Any further discussion?
We're calling Pam.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, got eight minutes. Discussion, possible action on blow. Dave is coming in here.
Sorry, I lost.
He's coming. He just got on one.
Come in. Come on in.
We're done. Are we at this?
Yep.
We're at this. So yesterday, I got a call from the warranty inspection. Kevin Efflerly wanted to make sure there wasn't some misunderstanding about being able to get inside. He was just saying, no, we need to verify that they will not look at it, so I called the support number that they had, and the gal I talked to said, you know, maybe they don't understand that they can't get inside it. They may think it's just set up there with no access.
And they'd be Anderson windows?
Yes, the inspector. So anyway, he called Kevin Efflerly. Kevin gave me his number. I finally talked with him yesterday. He said he's gotta get back to me. He was thinking about coming and just going up inside, but he, he's gonna get back to me on that, so that's where we're at right now. I guess, my opinion, even if they replace the windows, we're gonna have to have somebody to install them. So it might not hurt to talk to some contractors. And I went through my list of where we've been and what we've done in the past. I had already forgotten that Thrum had caulked it once before Hankel did anything. This was back in 22. So anyway, you know, we maybe should approach some contractors, I think.
You had, oh, the steeple, you had a steeple contractor that you knew of also?
Yes, yeah.
Have you had a chance to visit with them at all?
I have not. No, I think. Yeah, but, you know, it's nice to pursue warranty thing, but either way, I'm still gonna have to have a contractor. I think Hankel, we kind of get the idea that they, they'd like to help us, but they can't, you know, they just can't.
Are we maybe assuming that maybe we wouldn't be involved with it? Because I mean, I'm thinking warranty is warranty, and I mean, I, do we know that labor is not involved, or is that an assumption, or?
That's my assumption. I mean, yes, I, you know, do we want a lawyer up and go after him? I don't know.
It depends on what it costs.
It's probably what's gonna pay.
Yeah. I'm not opposed to looking, looking up for some labor people I know, but before we actually hire somebody, I guess I'd kind of like to know the, and that's not really all your role here, as far as to look into all of that, but.
I, I'm not sure there's a procedure over a certain dollar amount we have to publicly offer, right?
Public.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I had contacted a contractor, but then you were gonna have a meeting with Hankel, so he told me to stop and not do it, but I have.
And now we're at that point where.
We're at the point where.
That's correct, and so I put it on there, because we gotta get going hard before it's too late.
That's right. I told Dave to get ahold of you.
Yeah.
So I can have a go, but. I don't know what you want to do.
So is this something that we can have Aaron, you know, send him a letter and ask about, you know, this was under warranty, and it doesn't sound like it's, it's been real successful almost since day one, you know, from what, and I've been up there and looked at it. He showed me as well that, yeah, this isn't something.
It would be nice to have a yes or no.
Yeah, I guess it couldn't hurt, in my mind.
Didn't they say the windows are warranty, but the, everything else is not? The windows are 25 years, the trim and everything is.
That's Anderson's answer, a construction thing, and and we had the book out before. I need to get a mic. Yeah, I'll have to get out and read that again. Aaron's gonna need it.
Yeah. I'm thinking maybe we should try to at least, like, go after part of it, even if we say, you know what, we'll, we'll share the cost of this with you, you know.
This is my thought also, if Aaron means to get involved, because it does need to, you know, if we're looking at $50,000 to install windows, it's, well, they would look into it a little bit and say that, no, that's part of the deal also.
Yeah.
We should, so.
And as I understood, that there was some sort of a fund set aside at the beginning of that whole project, and we kind of let that go, so to speak, is that?
That's a typical, well, it's retainage.
Right, the retainer fees for these kinds of things.
Well, retainage is not, once, once it reaches substantial completion, you gotta be retaining. Just kind of, you know, it's not that it just stays up there forever. The retainage, that's, that's its own deal, but.
There was another thing called permissions and errors. That they are supposed to have insurance for, or can have, whether they do or not, you know, it's all, you know, I wish I knew, but I don't.
Half a minute, and it's 9:50.
So what do you think we ought to do?
You know, these guys aren't charging us to do inspections, I don't think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The more the merrier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get the steeple people maybe up and, and the contractors that you're looking at.
The, the thing will be if they want a lift to look at it.
Right, but they should be able to put those numbers together, I would think, right, Dave, if they're looking at it up there, and, yeah.
Give some advice for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nine o'clock. Open the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment. I am here. Any oral or written comments?
None.
And then?
I have none.
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 Done? Any public comments? Seeing none?
Yeah, nothing. I will see if you know.
I don't see any, okay.
Sorry.
I will close the public hearing at nine oh one. Approved resolutions appropriations. Rachel, you want to go back?
Yep. And so the expenditures increased five thousand to the reporters department. Increased thirty thousand to the home health department. Increase two hundred thousand to the secondary roads department. Increase one thousand dollars to the courthouse department. And increase ten thousand dollars to the non-departmental department. Revenues increased thirty thousand to the home health department and increased six hundred and three thousand to secondary roads department. That's it, this is today of May.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm open to approve resolution twelve seventy-eight dash twenty-five, the annual.
Forty-three.
Pam made motion. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Jim second. Any further discussion?
Wrong call, Tom.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
Pam.
Hi.
Motion passes. Discussion and possible action on solutions for year twenty-six, annual support agreement.
All right, so I'm, excuse me, I'm going to separate this discussion out into two different parts. One is the IT managed services that solution provides. And then there's also the software portion that solution uh, provides as well. So I went over, we'll talk about my side of it, the IT side of it first, which I believe came in right at around thirty thousand dollars. Um, there is no way that we are getting thirty thousand dollars worth of value out of this contract. It's um, simply just not being utilized that much. I asked solutions for an hour-by-hour breakdown of when, when we did contact them, how many overall hours that we used. I also asked for a itemized listing of what exactly is done for each of these specific things that it lines out in the contract. So I will wait for that information. My thought as of right now, again, very preliminary, would be to sitch to a time and materials contract. I think we use them uh, at this point more frequently than having a retainer or a set of hours won't be necessary. But I want to be able to make an informed decision based on what their utilization is now. But uh, I have a strong feeling that thirty thousand dollars of value is not being gained from that contract. Uh, this is also the first solutions contract I've seen uh, since working for the department. So I want to work through that to, to get a little more um, specific information about where they think that they're earning this thirty thousand dollars.
Would you like to see previous years?
Oh, pre, yeah, any information that I can get is. Do you have the contract language for those previous years as well?
Same thing that we're looking at here.
For the, okay, yeah, that would definitely be helpful, but um, I, I think it's kind of a prove-it situation at this point where the onus is on them to say, this is why you should pay this, not, you know.
When you say time and materials, are you talking, they have, they have a term called break fix?
Yes.
So that's pretty much.
Yeah, exactly. A break fix. And then they have the listing of how much that costs per hour depending on the break. Those numbers aren't outrageous. That's how much I would expect to pay for a break fix from any IT consulting company. I don't see that to be too egregious.
Some of this is very, well, all three of these documents are, are very deep when you start reading them. And you kind of go in circles and everything. There is one part, and I don't, if it's the one I've got here. In this statement, it says solutions does have a minimum requirement, does have minimum requirements to support customers' network safety and secures, security and safety. Meaning that they don't expect us to be on the cutting edge or everything, but they do have a bare minimum as far as where we need to be for them to actually provide services. So, and I don't have a problem with what you're proposing here at all. But I just want to also make sure that we don't get left out on a limb in regards to, we do need something, so.
Oh, we absolutely have that line. And that's what I want to find out exactly is where that line is because I don't know either. But we absolutely need them on the managed service side. We would never get rid of them. That would be foolish. Um, but just like I talked about, we need to drill down a little bit more to see um, exactly where that money's going. Because I think it, uh, it's just been kind of this blob of money that was handed over. And now especially with the position that I'm in, I think we can start paring that down and understanding exactly what the county's paid for.
When do we need to have this?
July first.
Okay. So we have a little bit of time.
We do have a little bit of time, yes. And, yes, right.
So you also mentioned that you had contacted or had um, some additional contact with other counties and, and some of these have, have raised concerns.
Yeah, e- everything involving these contracts has definitely raised concerns. It was the biggest point of discussion when I was in Howard County helping out was the solution, um, the solution contract. A lot of the counties don't have the managed services side of the solutions agreement. I just want to be sure those are two separate, two separate ideas. So a lot of them don't do that at all.
So why don't they, can I ask that? I, I don't mean to interject, but maybe I can ask.
They feel that, they, they just feel that in-house IT is able to handle a majority of the services that solution provides. And that I'm, that's kind of again, what I'm trying to look for is, is that the case for Mitchell County as well? Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
And I don't know.
Yeah, so the IT managed side is the thirty thousand dollar contract. Now, Rachel, is that in addition to like the catch-up monies that we paid them here two, three, four weeks ago where we were twelve hundred dollars or so?
I think so.
So.
I could be wrong.
So, I'm sure, go ahead.
They, they already sent the invoices for this, which is hilarious because we haven't signed anything yet. But they sent all the invoices last week. And there is, I know, there is one for the thirty thousand. There's also one for five thousand that says like pre-printed, like we're on it.
So we got a sixty thousand, a thirty thousand, and then the five thousand for the one that we were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the one I'm most familiar with was that five thousand mark, which seemed, like, you know, I was told I have five thousand dollars with the support to pull from. I'm like, that's awesome. I mean, that's.
Which would be, yeah, backup and.
Backup and if something's too com, you know.
Yeah.
That needs to happen, but I don't know. I was kind of got smacked by the thirty K.
The prepaid labor is something that you pay in order to fix, have money there if something happens that you've already got money in the bank to fix it. That's the prepaid labor.
Right.
But, but you also have to be on the silver plan in order to qualify to have prepaid labor. So if we're not on the silver plan, the question is the money that we sent them, are they going to reimburse that or not? That's in here also. It says, you have to be on silver plan.
And there is no plan less than the silver plan now. They eliminated the one that was.
So then they just go to the hourly rate?
Right?
So then the question is, okay, you have five thousand dollars of our money. And since we're not doing this, are you going to send it back to us or what are you going to do with it? So that would be a question.
It's a good point. Yeah, there's going to be a lot, but I'm going to chew through it and I'll have help as well.
With the five thousand, finish out the rest of the fiscal year.
No, it carries over. When we started, I think it was at fifteen thousand and it never really got used much. I thought that was the number, but then.
That's a lot of break fix.
When we went through the IT director thing, it, it hammered it. It ate it up pretty fast.
Okay.
But those invoices they sent went back to two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, that was strange.
That was so strange.
Yeah.
We just wanted.
Because I logged them all and it was like, this seems rather unusual. So, yeah. Yeah, it seems like then in that case, barring some extenuating circumstance, that it would be.
Are you going to let us know and?
Yes, definitely. I will share every piece of communication that I get um, with you guys. Uh, probably, I don't know, does Aaron generally look these over? I think that would be a good deal if not, because there's a lot, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
There's a lot of legalese that might go a little over there.
Okay.
Go there. Okay, so that's the managed support side and what we're talking about there. The other side is the actual software solution side of it when it comes to what the courthouse uses for, for our software packages for all the departments. I spoke individually with each department head about this matter. Um, I've also talked to others, employees, and there's some major concerns about the contract the way it is now. There's some, I won't belabor, you know, reading off everything that's on this letter. But I did send you guys a copy. I think Rachel actually updated it with Mitchell County. But this was created by um, the IT director at Wright County and it was actually approved by the Wright County Board yesterday. But this is a listing of all the things that need to be fixed in that particular contract. I don't know if you had a chance to read the letter or not, but we're at the point where the only sort of leverage that we're going to have is if we band together as counties. And honestly, uh, we're pretty stuck and we can, you know, you can talk about that till you're blue in the face. But the reality is of it that we have to have this service. But I think if we band together with other counties, we can actually make a little headway into trying to get some of those things uh, in the contracted, the contract corrected. I mean, we're talking about things as silly as having the right date.
Right.
On the page, which to me is, just shows a big lack of, you know, caring almost about what's going on. As clear lawyers have gotten ahold of it as well. Um, but my recommendation and what the department heads have agreed to is send the um, this letter that I booked you to solutions in for, in uh, working with other counties to try to get to some of those issues addressed. Um, I think Mitchell County can be a leader in that as well. So um, if you have, let me say, if you have any questions about the solution software contract, I'll try my best to answer them. But it's a, it's a problem and everybody's having it. This isn't a Mitchell County thing in the least.
I have a question about the letter.
Yes, well.
It's not a problem, but it's just a, I didn't have a chance to correlate what's on the letter as far as section two point one point four and what it addresses. And what's six point three and what it addresses in the contract. So what I'm, what I just want to make sure is that what was sent to us was pretty much a boilerplate document from another county. And then we have our name on it. So is our contract exactly the same as the boilerplate document that we got? So if these numbers correlate with our contract? I mean, I don't want to be specifying something and it's like, whoa.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, that contract is the same for every county.
Okay.
Yeah, that's exactly, they sent the same one out there.
Very good.
To everybody, so.
That's interesting.
That's a, that's a excellent question.
I do want to, um, I think we should, I went and visited a little bit with Rachel yesterday. They definitely, to me, they're just throwing numbers out there. They, it doesn't seem very professional. But saying that, um, we don't have anybody else to go to. So I don't want to ruin a relationship until, until there is someone else. And that could be a couple of years if.
Yeah, if we're lucky.
If we're lucky, so.
It's a long process.
Um, because these dollar amounts are just outrageous. And we've been bad on this for two years or three years, ever since we went to the silver and went from, I think, like Jim said, that fifteen thousand down to five thousand. It's just been chaos every year with solutions and things are slow. They aren't getting their answers, you know, and, but yet they want their money. And then when she showed me those bills, I was not very happy that they're already sending bills out and it's just not, something's not right here.
No, definitely not. And that will, it's, I, I agree with you of a lot of the things that seem to be glaringly wrong in, in, in these documents. And legalese just bent to almost obfuscate what they're trying to do. You know, like how much money are we paying for what? I was confused without the help. So you're definitely right there. Are you talking specifically about the managed services, like the IT side or both sides?
Well, I think the IT side, um, I think you got a handle on that, you know, like, because I'm blind there. But, you know, the, the other side is, we just need answers. And we're not getting them and they're wanting our money and it's.
Yeah, that, that exasperation is mirrored um, all over, um, all over Iowa. Exasperation is the right, is the right, is the right word to use because we're kind of stuck. And these documents we're getting are unacceptable. And I, I feel, and there's others that feel this, the only way we're going to make any sort of change to this is by banding together. And pretty much forcing these things to be at least looked at. Because otherwise, they could just be like, well, if you don't sign the contract, then you don't have your solution software and you can't run the courthouse.
How many are banding together about?
Uh, currently, it has been approved by Wright County was yesterday. And then everyone at the um, meeting that I went to are also going to be presenting it to their board for a total of six more counties. But the hope is that it will be as many solution counties as we can, as we can get. But I think as more people read this, the more people are going to be tickled enough to want to do something.
I was at least tickled that some of the points they had were some of them that I had already highlighted. And I, I visited with another county or two and, and, you know, their comment was too, it's not uncommon, you know, to get a vendor contract and look at it and say, okay, we don't necessarily agree with this, we don't necessarily agree with this, and, and we don't agree with this. Go back to them. Now, they might push back and say, oh, we don't know if we want to have our legal team. But in the end, you know, you usually can work those things out. And I looked at this list as well, and some things are just downright contradictory. And, and some things, you know, release them of any responsibility whatsoever, which is a real concern for an IT provider, vendor, you know, that nature. So I, I think that it, it would be a good idea to address the matter head-on and, and go ahead and go to them and say, these are, these are our concerns as well. And uh, um, you know.
Probably a lot of counties are just blindly signing it, you know, like, oh, this is okay.
Right, because there's, you know, they don't realize that, you know, you can take a look at that contract and, and, you know.
So um, that was, I guess, the solution. The um, solution for what, what we can do for the time being to try to get some response from the company.
Do you need us to approve that letter that you sent to us? Are you doing with it being sent to solutions?
Just do consensus.
Like consensus?
I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Good.
Center.
All right, I appreciate that. That'll be good. Um, and I'll continue to uh, to work with other counties and I'm sure you guys will as well. But we'll, we'll really get this hammered out because we need to make a smart decision. Because this is a, a huge amount of money with a seven percent increase on the top of this. But yeah, I'll get that sent off and of course, I'll keep you guys in the loop and keep you with every conversation that I have regarding this. I'll be sure you're either included or copied or what have you. But I'll take ownership of it and we'll go from there. Sound good, guys?
Want to be sure that Aaron gets a copy of.
It's going to be vital that we have Aaron.
Yeah, yeah.
I would like to make sure that each county keep us informed of that too, that there's either jumping on board or not. And so we can see what we're at with the number of counties.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know that this.
Small.
Yes, there's multiple. And I think we're hoping it'll snowball from here and be enough that they can't ignore it. That's the goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, you're welcome.
Number fourteen, further discussion on changes with county focal services.
Good morning.
Good morning. We have a sunny agenda? Good morning. We have a sunny agenda. We had a wonderful meeting last Wednesday. Thank you for that.
I was just going to say, we got a chance to meet individually with all of you, so appreciate your time on that. And yeah, I know you mentioned you were going to do some department head meetings and things and give you some information just about some benefits of, of human resources to take to that meeting and questions to consider. So I guess I'm just here to answer any questions if you guys have anything.
I don't think I have any more questions in addition to, to what, you know, we have discussed previously. I am concerned that, that we need to be cautious that we're not duplicating services that are already provided, you know, through the state or judicial mental health advocate. That situation has been raised and I think we've all gotten a clearer, more clear picture of, of how that financially rolls down and how that service is covered. And so that's probably a non-issue, so to speak, at this point. And so.
So you're saying Pam, it's a non-issue that you don't feel is an overlap? Is that what you're saying?
So, so when I look at the judicial mental health advocate position that is provided for the services paid for through the state to currently county social services to Fayette and then we have that res, the mental health, yeah. And it's called a judicial mental health advocate if I'm not mistaken, because it's, it's required by the court. And so that service will continue as, as normal. And unless we would choose not to enter into the contract with those other five counties, I think there's, what is there, five or six, five counties on that? So, and for that situation. So we, that isn't something that we need to look at this A position covering at this point in time. Now, I think Angela was going to get a little more information this week on where they move forward, but it sounded like the state, there was no question that, that, that coverage would continue. And so it's not something we're physically paying for now and don't need to anticipate that in the future. Now reimbursement might take longer and I'm sure coming from the state, I'd expect it would take six months, possibly a year. So we'll need to, you know, make sure that from that standpoint, that, or Fayette would need to make sure that they're covering their budgeting. And as far as in a full-time HR position, I, I have some concerns. I've visited with some department heads, but I'm anxious to hear what they have to say tomorrow as far as a, a need for HR.
Cause I'll speak to a couple of things. So the mental health advocate, you know, we are sharing that with most other counties.
Correct.
It's been shared just through a resolution. And it's, I just felt that it was something that we could actually just have our own mental, mental health advocate in Mitchell County. It's not that it would be an expense to us because rather than the state reimbursing it through Fayette, they would reimburse it in Mitchell County to us. So it's not going to be an added expense to us. We would just have our own mental health advocate. And then in regards to the HR position, you said full-time HR individual. I don't know if it's going to actually be considered a full-time HR position because the, that individual would have a number of other tasks going on. So there would be other things for the individual to do. And I know some departments have had concerns as far as when they hear HR, they think, is HR going to dominate our department and tell us what we need to do? I don't envision it that way. I envision it as just going to be a resource to help these departments with things that they need to do. They can reach out to HR for assistance when it comes to job descriptions, applications, interviews. They don't have to, they don't have to reach out if they don't want to, but again, it would not be a full-time position that would be incorporated with the other stuff that's going on.
There's some policies as well that I know over the last couple of months, we've kind of discussed that would need to be updated. If she could do, do some of that, like update the employee handbook?
Yeah.
Is that something that we would be able to do? So there's a lot of things that she would possibly be able to work on that Rachel or Lindsey or us don't have time for.
Right.
And I tried to gear this as far as not saying Megan's got the job, but trying to just say, not say it that way. We do have to have an application process, so I said position.
Sorry.
So that's okay. I wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, I, that makes me very cautious right now. I think we need to be very careful about that.
It did come up at a previous meeting that we are granting somebody a job. We are not granting anybody a job. We are opening up, we are possibly opening up a position to help retain the services that are happening already for Mitchell County people. So we're not granting a job. We're trying to create the same services that are being offered to the people in Mitchell County.
Did, did you guys get a phone call last week from an individual?
I did.
And I think there's a good point there that she's a retired, been in the medical field her whole life, 47 years. And she's apparently was kind of a go-to for an individual that dealt with her through part of their lives that didn't know where to go for some information and I think they needed a ride or they needed to fill out. And so this individual called your office and wondered if they could help. And, and in turn, yes, came back that the individual has helped and everything. So two, two things there that somebody that, somebody feels comfortable with going to, even though she's retired, then she was able to steer him to somebody that would help, that that person felt comfortable to going. So if we don't have these resources, you know, where, where would this individual go? You know, it didn't sound like he, he or she had any, you know, way of, you know, finding out what they should do. So, you know, it's, people feel comfortable talking to certain people. And I think that office is one of them. So I just thought it was, I'm glad that she reached out to us or a few of us.
Elizabeth Penny.
Did she reach out to you also? Surely Penny, I don't, she's not going to be, have a problem with being known, with Shirley Penny, so she's.
Right, yeah.
She's currently a ship representative.
Yeah, I'm, and the, the thing is that as I understand, you're not providing transportation to people. Is that?
Well, we do.
You, you are providing transportation, taking people back and forth.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And so that, and is that part of the general assistance?
Yep.
That is part of your social services?
Correct.
Okay. So when the new entity takes over in July, is it possible that they are going to be able to provide that kind of service? Granted, the phone number might be different, you know, but, but we have to remember that the same, not the same, but an entity that was paying the salaries before and providing to make sure that those services were available is still doing that. They're doing it under a district level as opposed to a regional level. And so would someone be able to be available to them to do that? Very possibly, yes. And, and you're talking about opening or creating two different positions. Am I correct?
Correct.
So, so I think we need to take a really strong look at exactly what those other job responsibilities are for a lead position and, and in comparison to the coordinator position. And ask yourselves and ask other counties, what are you doing? What are you using? How are you using these people now so that we're not having duplication of services? Why would Mitchell County pay for duplication of services? Several other counties have said, we are effective July 1st rolling our general, excuse me, our general assistants under our, our board of health. And that the, the number of hours that are being used right now for these kinds of services are not as many as you would like to think. A sweep of human services goes on every five to seven years. If you follow their, their processes, they're, they're restructuring. This isn't the first time and I'm sure it won't be the last, you know? So this is not anything new for the Department of Health and Human Services. So I think we need to be very cautious as far as creating positions and especially when we take a look at exactly what kinds of services are going to be supplied, expected, and is it already supplied by another entity? We don't know. Some counties are saying, let's hold off and, and see, let's hold off six months because their budgets are just as tight as ours and they're also looking out ahead a year or two when the 2% cap rolls in. So I'm concerned that we create positions and then have to say, wait a minute, you know, now we're really struggling to, to keep our budget in line. So I, I think we don't have enough information yet to create two new positions.
So you said, you said an awful lot. I'll try to.
Yep, I did, I did.
I have something to speak on. I'll try to move to speak.
Sure, sure.
As far as there were job descriptions that was, that were provided to us so we can read what the job descriptions are and services that those individuals are going to provide. In regards to the transportation, the state has said that there's going to be, I'll try to remember the numbers. Be nav, there'll be a navigator, you might, you helped me because. There's going to be a navigator and then there will be assistance underneath that navigator and they're responsible to be in the area.
So, yeah, just to clarify, there's system navigators and the lead position that you're talking about oversees those system navigators. So that's just one person per district.
Right, right.
For 16 counties.
For 16 counties.
Yes.
And in there, I did not see anything in regards to transportation services, that they're going to just come here and help people with information and work for, or they're just going to come here and try to help people with their mental health.
Yes.
Stuff.
So part of the definition of system navigation, it does say in-person, telephonic, video. They, they have, the Iowa Primary Care, the Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organization has told us that they are not going to be able to be in every county like they are. Now, they, they can come out and, and help people if, if they have the resources, but they also can't tell us today where their main offices, their access points are going to be. So, so again, we're, you know, we're just, we're just trying to, to promote local access for assistance in helping individuals here in Mitchell County. So that's, that's really what, what our mission is, is to continue to help the residents of Mitchell County that need help every day with various things. And we will be, we see this position, anybody to be in this position, to be partners with the Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organizations, to be partners with the disability access points, to get those people, if they qualify, have a behavioral health disorder or have a disability, that they get to those long-term supports because that's where the funding is for these services. So, but how, how does a person, there's, there, there could be a phone number in, at our location in our office. So they, they just come up to the window, see a phone number and, and call on their own. That's very difficult for people to do. Just so you know, I, I mean, we, we help people with this every day. So just trying to get that message out. So yes, those, those folks, the state has come in and done a realignment for, for those populations. It's just, we help so many people that are not in those, in those populations or would qualify for those services. So we're a social, what this position is promoting is social services. That is anybody who walks in our door. Because if somebody walks in and they don't have a behavioral health or disability, then they're going to call these numbers and they're going to say, I'm sorry, you don't qualify for our services or show me proof that you have a disability. How, I mean, for a person to know how to go about and get that proof on their own is very difficult, so.
So I'll add to that somewhat. So there's, there's two different, let me back up. In regards to some counties thinking that they're going to put general assistance into the board of health and public health, I don't have, public health, home health is the board of health. I read the code as far as both, as far as board of health. One is 577, the other one's 137. In there, it says what the board of health may do and what they shall do. What they shall do is requirements that they're obligated to do for the county. And then it says what they may do. It just, as far as general assistance was never listed in there at all. It's basically this, what the board of health is supposed to do for an individual's health, health reasons. Megan said it right there and she said the keyword, social services. Yes, she's currently working for social services and social services is going to go away, but that does not mean that we can't provide social services to our people. Social services are information and referral. The other side of the health coin, the, I don't know how else to say that. So I do not see where a county can dump this into the board of health. Doesn't read in the code that way. I have one more thing in my head, but it's gone.
The actually, general assistance, some counties don't even necessarily provide, some are handled by the auditor's office. Some are handled by the board of health. Now, I'm not sure if they have to put in a special resolution to do so, but, but they've been, you know, in some counties, that's what they're, they're planning to move to effective July 1.
So. So does Mitchell County Public Health Home Health, they want to take over general assistance? Is that what you're saying? I mean, they're interested in doing that?
I, I think that's a question that we need to ask when we visit with department heads. And, and it, it is something that I have reached out and said, you know, how can we cooperatively structure this? And the comment was, now, keep in mind, I haven't brought this up to the board of health, you know, I'm on their board as well and will certainly do so. But the coordinator position where you're doing the general assistance now and you're also handling those daily people coming in and out and asking questions and helping them with Medicaid forms or helping them call phone numbers from that standpoint, as long as there is some training, they could provide backup for a part-time position similar to what is currently there. They could provide backup to that position. You would house a part-time social services, general assistance position under your board of health and they could provide backup and that position could also possibly provide. of Health and they could provide backup and that position could also possibly provide some backup as far as the, you know, the substance abuse coalition, different situations like that where the coordinator position is currently involved in the county. So it would, it would fall under the Board of Health.
So.
It's in the same building currently. You know, it's not like, and, and, you know, saying that people are only coming to those two offices, people come to that building, you know? And, and so they might ask one side or the other as far as, I don't think there's, you know, and they've worked cooperatively with those two positions for the last several years from what I understand, that, you know, they will let them know that someone called and, and needs this kind of assistance or vice versa, you know? Both entities go to the jail to help provide guidance and, and what we, we need to try to clarify is exactly what kind of service, this is an entity that provides resources. We have North Iowa Community Action, of which Mitchell County is a member. And so are we not making use of some of those services because we've had these individuals right here all this time, but yet we don't have a mental health hospital within our county? So we are literally sending people to Mercy for any mental health issues anyway. So we're a facilitator. So I see a part-time position rolling up under the Board of Health to coordinate and facilitate those things that, that we're currently providing on a day-to-day basis.
So my question would be where, why would we be creating a position on the Board of Health when we're actually trying to create a position that was going to be working on the supervisors that would be doing the same thing? My next question would be, where is the Board of Health going to get money in their budget to do this? Their budget's substantially lower than what our budget is. I know of a line item that we can actually utilize in order to make this happen. Also, the county attorney discussed with me this week in regards to what the sheriff proposed. That is something that he views as possible that could be done. The sheriff has to agree to that. If he's not here today now, it could be the way the code reads as far as what he was proposing for room and board is that 60% of the room and board needs to go to the general, all the money needs to go to the general fund, 60% needs to go to four items that are specified in the code.
Correct.
That leaves 40% of the stuff over that if the sheriff chooses to, you can have an agreement with the board supervisors to develop a plan to utilize that money. So that is a possibility to help fund this. I also reached out to Floyd County in regards to, they are interested in the HR side of this. That would help save some cost on this. The mental health advocate, as we spoke, was reimbursed by the state through Mitchell County, so that would help with that side of it. And again, we have some money in our general fund, so. I don't, I want to do this. I'll just say it that way. I think this is a big thing for Mitchell County.
I think that's, I think that's very, very clear. So, so let's talk for just a moment about the, the budget dollars that are sitting currently in the sheriff's budget. And so is the plan that all of those funds then move towards a position or two positions? Or, and/or, how long has that money been sitting in that budget and been accumulating?
So we usually get, if I remember right, the sheriff has room and board fees of around $5,000 or a little bit more when he comes to us every month. And I calmed that out, I will be able to remember all the numbers, but 5,000 times 12 is 60,000 and if you do 40% of that, seems like it could come to 21,000 or 22,000 that would be available. That could be used if he chooses to help with this. Right from the start, he made that comment that he would, he was the one that brought that up. So he's interested, he just wants to make sure it's legal to do it, which, so do I. The attorney said that he feels that it probably is something that's doable. So I don't know if that answered your question or not, but.
Yeah, yeah, I understood that that, that budget, those monies had been accumulating for 10 or 12 years and, and that there was not an interest to allocate all of those dollars, but just a small portion of them. So, you know, from that standpoint. I also think we need to further clarify the needs, what we feel the needs would be from an HR standpoint, from our department heads, and so I'm looking forward to, to that information as well. And if other counties are planning on co-sharing an HR position, then I would entertain a meeting, a joint meeting with them to see what their, their thoughts are. So for now, I would like to, we, we don't have any action on this, so I think we need to just table it.
When would, when would we have the information? Because we're starting to get wound down here in regards to if we're going to post notice for this. But it has to be up on the board, it has to be in the papers. So I mean, we're getting to the point where we need to start thinking about what we're going to do.
Laura, would you like to speak?
Can you hear me?
Are you there?
Are you able to hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. So this is Laura with Mitchell County Public Health. I do agree that a part-time position needs to be hired to do general assistance. Now, what that looks like as far as the board, that's up to you guys. I have not had those conversations. I did talk with our region at our administrator meeting. And can you still hear me?
Yes.
And a lot of other counties are taking on at public health, taking on the general assistance. And some, the auditor's office is taking it on and some are the county social services. People were doing it and now they're, I don't think they had a plan yet.
So we have access in the state to the general, of general assistance email through Basecamp, is what it's called, through ISAC. And Ashley has reached out and gotten some data about what counties are doing, especially with regions going away. And so she wasn't able to be here today, but we have gotten that. And yes, there are some public health agencies that, that are taking over general assistance. There's, you know, there's, there's all kinds of entities that do general assistance. General assistance is a small program for low-income individuals and it's for assistance, for, for rent utilities. What, what the physicians are proposing is social services. So general assistance is a piece of, of that, but social services is so much more. It's, there's a one-page, a piece of paper that you follow to do general assistance. So there's, there's a lot of the, like the resources that Pam was talking about, North Iowa Community Action, they are a resource that we refer every individual to before they access general assistance. We, what we are, we are skilled to do is to help individuals, our local residents of Mitchell County, access North Iowa Community Action, access a plethora of different resources, whether it comes to homelessness, whether it comes to all different kinds of things. So that general assistance is a small piece, it's a, it's a small department within the county that provides set, set funding for certain things based on eligibility. There's, again, that, that's, just wanting to under, have people understand that, that that's, that's a piece of what we do. So, so if, if public health chooses to do that, that's great, but for those other folks that need all the other social services, that's where we see that there'd be a void. So, and with the part-time position, I just want to say too, that, that person isn't always there. So the door is open, people walk in, doesn't matter when. So that, that piece of the other position is helping out with that information referral when the part-time person is not there. So, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, so if we leave it to the auditor's office and she's knee-deep in voting season and these people try to come in while there's people trying to vote in the courthouse, that's going to be hard on you to have to handle as well.
We, I mean, we would probably have one person in the public health. I wouldn't imagine you'd have multiple people at it one time. I don't know that. But we could probably expect one person. We'd have two people who would manage voting stuff.
So, and, and I'm not disputing that we need, could use a part-time facilitator, coordinator, or, you know, a, a part-time individual. I'm just looking at how we would structure that. And right now, there isn't someone in the building five days a week. So I would think that if we structured it under public health and people know to go to that building, then, you know, when the part-time person isn't there, someone else is also knowledgeable and, and able to be their backup and could assist them the other days of the week that the part-time position, should we choose to, to, you know, implement that when they are not there, you know? That it would be, I, I think it would be a, a great sharing of services.
So, so there is somebody scheduled to be in the office five days a week currently. We work for a different agency, County Social Services, so we're gone to meetings and different things.
Right.
But there is somebody that is scheduled five days a week in our building, so just to be clear on that. But we, we don't work on Mitchell County employees, so we do general assistance, a small department for a county. We just do so many other things outside of county social services for the residents of Mitchell County.
And I've made it clear that I'm not in favor of these people going to the auditor's office, sheriff's department, police department, hospital. I mean, those people all have their jobs that taxpayers are paying for, not, you know, having them come into these offices and try and figure out where they should be sending them or.
Well, a lot of your, your services stem from those, those places within the county, understandably so, whether it's a hospital or the jail or whatever, or they walk into, you know? So then you are providing an additional service, resources from that point, from that point. That will still, I would imagine, that would still continue. People are, are going to call, you know, from the hospital or from the jail and say, you know, we have someone here that could use some help. I'm just saying that that part-time position could roll under public health and that that would be a, a good fit. It would be a good fit and it would be good backup.
I don't think it would be a good fit myself in regards to what Todd had said. We have had a number of letter-up sort of recommendation from key departments within the county that recommends that we retain these services for the people of Mitchell County. I don't think it would be a good fit.
That, that's all right.
The Board of Health, Public Health, Home Health has enough to do as it is. They do a good job of what they do. I don't dispute that, but I don't think this is a good fit for them. They have their role and they need to stay in their lane and their role because they're good at it.
And I just want to, from what you've been saying, I'm trying to, you're got, you got a lot of pieces of the puzzle that's got to match up with part-time people that they're in the office, auditor's office, sheriff's office, but that's too many pieces of puzzle put together for these people that are challenged.
They're, they're calling them now. There's times when people stop there and, and, or call there and they're notifying the social services people. I mean, that flow of communications, we're going back and forth, you know? Someone will call in and, and if I'm not mistaken, because we talked about this at the Board of Health meeting, and, and they will notify the Ashley and say, you know, someone has been, needs some assistance as far as that's concerned. That, that part has been going on all along.
And you were here-
Right.
Let's do it.
Right, and I'm saying that that part-time position then could roll under the Board of Health.
But you were here when the sheriff talked a month ago or so that said, you know, my staff does not have time to-
I understand that.
Take care of that. And they, if somebody walks in now, I get that, but most of them are probably coming to your office.
Coming to our office or we could receive phone calls and we help, and go off to them and help them.
Right.
And you said part-time.
Go ahead. I just was going to say, like, but if, if there's not social services, then who is going to do that help?
Correct.
Right.
And you said part-time again, and the part-time is focused on the general assistance side. Megan said a number of times where the general assistance is just a small piece of the pie. The county, not, the social services side of it is the bigger part of the pie in regards to information and referral and just pointing people into a direction, whether it be the state direction or actually services within this county.
They need to start calling the general assistance.
Right, because that's only a very small number of hours in a month in any county.
And that's right. So they need a lot more than that part-time position. So to, to feel that the part-time physician is going to provide all those services in that big piece of the pie is not realistic. That's why it's not a good fit. I don't believe it to be a good fit. When will the Board have their information in regards to, is there more department-type discussion being talked about this week with the Board or where are we at with stuff?
I'm having my meeting tomorrow. Pam is-
I'm attending.
Is attending with all departments that are available.
And it needs to also, you know, that it's, HR is a resource for departments. It's not a mandate for the departments, at least the way I envision it.
And we also maybe need to take a look at if, if we currently have HR issues, we are contacting our person at Alders and Cooney, is that right?
Well, if it's a legal thing, we do, but that's a, that's a more expensive route to go. Sometimes HR, HR questions can be answered without getting into the legal realm of things.
Right. And, and so we need to ask ourselves either now or moving forward, what is the cost of an HR issue, so to speak? And are, would we be paying 10,000, 20,000, 30,000, 40,000? And maybe we need to ask that question of some other counties. And I gathered some of that information, but I want to put it into a little more accurate package so that you can review some of the information that I've gathered from them as far as what are you spending on HR? Do you have an HR person? Would you use an HR person? Because I too have reached out, you know, could you share in the expense of an HR person? And, and in that case, would you be expecting them to be in your county one day a week or whatever the case may be? You know, from that standpoint.
In your rules.
Looking at policy and procedure handbooks, I, I don't disagree with that, that that needs to be done on a regular basis and that we're probably behind on that aspect of it. But that is not a full-time job every year. And I guess I'm, I'm not only just looking at one year, I'm, I'm trying to look out two or three years. years.
I get emails from Neil Gough quite often, and this last one was probably within the last month, month and a half. She wanted to know what Mitchell County does in regards to sitting down, and it had to do with HR, what Mitchell County does in regards to sitting down with employees and helping with job retention and answering questions that an employee might have throughout the year in regards to different things. Do you do that kind of with county social services?
Yeah. I meet with all employees at least once a year, sit down one-on-one with them. And we have employee performance reviews, we have all kinds of things like that that we need to, and I oversee all that.
Okay. So that is something Allers and Cooney is not going to do. So there's other things that are beneficial. And it's not a full-time HR position, say that again, but it's part of the package that the individual would be able to provide to the county, to the employees.
We have to hold until the.
We will.
We need.
Keep having discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have some notes, meetings attended.
At OSH City Council meeting last night, they approved issuance of a capital loan note in the amount of not to exceed $2.65 million. They figure it's going to be closer to $2.05 million, but it's not to exceed, just in case. Plan to repay by special assessments, sales tax. Governments are very favorably looked at in regards to bonds, issuers providing bonds to a government simply because the government can levy taxes in order to make the payment. That's not the plan for the city, but that makes us favorable through a bond, gives us a good rating because they know we can do that if we wanted to. But they're not planning on doing that. They're 10-year bonds, and they can be paid off in seven years. Best qualify for local banks to be doing that, which has happened a number of times in the past. City's currently an A1 rating. Interests are a quarter percent lower than they were at the start of 2025. There's a lot of other business going on, but I guess that's kind of the big one right there. That's all I have.
I have none. No meeting at camp.
My event that Sidney was also at was the denim walk last week, the survivors of sexual abuse. Other than that, I didn't have any other meetings.
I had a Heartland Insurance meeting, and Judy's coming, I think, in two weeks to talk about.
Next week.
Next week.
To talk about our insurance policy. And the big thing was, OSHA is requiring a hearing test for employees of 85 decibels and higher, which is mostly the secondary roads, conservation, sheriff department. Some counties are doing all employees, so they don't say, well, how come you get to meet this person? And some counties are having a service come in to do the test, but in school, you had that button you push. Some of them are buying their own machine in case they have a hire in between season that they can test themselves. So it's going to be, either way, it's quite costly.
So what, so if they do a hearing test of me and it comes to be 90 decibels, I mean, where are they going with that? Where are they going with that? What's the?
They want to start with, your first year is called the baseline, and then they test you every year after that to see if your hearing's going down. So when a person retires, they don't sue the county for.
I see.
Hearing loss.
Okay.
A contractor and construction company, that they do it every winter, and they have the trailer come in, and then they run in 10 people at a time. And it's going to see if we can correlate with those to do it at that time or not. Problem there is if the person's gone, they don't get it, then you got to go to audible hearing or something, get it, and then the county pays for that. They got to go there all the time.
I see.
Their county time, but then the county pays for it. So see which way they want to go, I guess. Either way, it's quite costly.
Yeah. I'm familiar with that, where they pull in the trailer, and they, yeah, they test you in the baseline, and then they compare it, they keep the records and compare it year after year to tell you if it's going up or if where your hearing level is at.
It's a little cheaper, more convenient to have them sheet herself, but it's not cheap either, so. So, get back to you later.
That's interesting that the counties are starting it up, and our Donley about two, three years ago, they just quit doing it because it was cost-effective in where basically, yeah, like Jim said, where are you going with this? I never thought of that. But to tell you that I had to, because my left ear is very, I can't hear out of it. So once I failed that test in the trailer, they lined me up. I had to go to Mason City, to the clinic, and do another hearing test. And then they called me to come back and do it again. I don't know who pays for that. I mean, I didn't have to pay for it, but, and that went on for about four years. And I went to the plant manager and said, you guys, this is, why are you doing that? I mean, every, I know, I can tell you, my left ear is no good. So then again, they quit, I got elected, and then I didn't have to do it. Come to find out, a couple years ago, they said that we're not doing it anymore, so. And then now the county wants to do that, so.
But it's an OSHA requirement now for the insurance?
Yeah, I think over 85 decibels, I think it was, and that's like a blender, they said.
Yeah. Yeah, and even though we were in an office at my previous employment, we still all had to be tested, or were all tested.
Is that all you had, Mark?
Okay. And I had none.
All right. Mirror management.
John, from Finisher, 4895 Ocean Avenue, Stacyville. Borderline Buildings LLC, Southwest Site, 3327 500th Street, Riceville. And Borderline Buildings LLC, Northeast Site, 5059 Addison Avenue, Riceville.
Public comments?
I just, this is something. I just had a question about, I know what you're trying to, that job she was discussing, and you brought up part-time, and Jim wants to keep it full-time. When that comes apart, is that coming out of somebody's budget or?
So there's two different jobs. One will be more part-time, that'll be the social service side slash general assistance. And the other one would be a little bit of HR, a little bit of social services, right, Jim?
Yes.
And a mixture of things. We haven't actually discussed full-time or communicating with another county. But yes, we're trying to figure out where that would come from. Any other questions? Will you dismiss us, right? All right. One more. We're going to adjourn the meeting at 10:08.